In order of the York County School Board work session for February 10th, 2020, this special meeting. At the beginning of our meeting, we're going to start with a report from the superintendent before we get to our agenda, and that'll be that he has some remarks relating to the Grafton complex and the events that's transpired there over the last week.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members and staff. I just wanted to share a little bit about the issue at the Grafton complex. As you know, we had the fire event that took place last Monday. Our team, a number of the folks in the room have literally worked day and night with the principals and guidance counselors and folks at the school level. Executive team has been working on logistics. We conducted a decision analysis that we presented at the public forums, which we held yesterday. We had one at 1:00 at York High School, and the other one was at 4:00 at TAB. I certainly appreciate your participation and support through that. We filled in a number of different questions from our community. I feel like staff members answered those questions on the spot in most cases. A number of them, Ms. Goff is working through, are frequently asked questions. We're going to update that every day. We've also put that presentation on our website. So folks, if they weren't there, if they couldn't see it, they can go through. We also Face -- is it called FaceTimed?
Facebook Live.
Facebook Live, sorry. Facebook Live, the event, so our families could see it. We had about 1,000 people show up at York, and we had close to 990, 980 at TAB High School. Many of you have fielded emails as well, and I know our staff members have fielded them as well. So we're trying to get back to our community as soon as we can. A couple of other things that we've done just in the last couple of days. Today, the Grafton Middle staff went to TAB Middle School to begin prepping and being prepared for students for tomorrow. Same as Grafton High School, they were over at York High School today preparing for students tomorrow. This evening, there are open houses going on at Grafton, at TAB Middle School for the Grafton students and parents. They're there right now, actually. That's why there's a number of our staff members are supporting the school. And then this evening, there's one at York High School for the Grafton students and families, just to get adjusted to the building and so forth. So if you have any questions or comments, or if Dr. Carol wants to add anything additional that I may have left out.
Sure. Good evening, board. I would just add that now it becomes more logistics and carrying out the plan that we've put forward to the parents. Yesterday, we had the executive team in working more on that and having close conversation with the principals so that they were getting what they needed. And tonight's orientations, for lack of a better word, as Dr. Shandor mentioned. Also, I wanted to let you know that Mrs. Skinner has started the work on the blended learning program, and that's going to be a big lift, and so they're getting into that now. We're still in ongoing conversations with the State Department. And then I got the opportunity with Mr. Dolak to tour the facilities. We met with Bell Ford. We had good news on the testing of the soot. There was no lead, so that -- we didn't expect any due to the nature of being a newer building, but still, it is a good feeling knowing that. So really, now they've set their priorities and protocols on the building just based on the amount of soot, depending on where it settled in the building. And there's three zones. One's heavier, one's middle, and one's really very light, most of that being in the high school. And so very impressive operation going on over there, and I was there watching them do some cleaning and how extensive they're doing. It's going to be a very clean building when we're done with that project. So everything on the building front is progressing well.
The other thing I would like to add is, I had the opportunity to meet with Michael Bennett, who's with YMCA, Brian Fuller, Mr. Bellamy with the county parts and rec program, as well as 12 pastors from a lot of our churches. They were fantastic. Met with them yesterday from 3:00 till about 4:30, sort of brainstorming solutions. Our community shared with us the concern related to childcare and hardship situations with our families. We are working through a plan right now. Ms. Parr, who's sitting behind me, was in that meeting with me. We're looking at a number of different churches and facilities that have opened their doors to us. So we're really blessed, obviously, to have them, and we're working on some logistics and legal issues with Ms. Econom -- excuse me, Ms. Berry is reviewing those documents. So we hope to have a plan as soon as we can get one put forth. We're also looking for a plan on Saturdays for our instructional staff and teachers and everyone else to provide childcare for their own children on Saturdays when they have to work. So if there's any questions or comments, we can certainly take them.
I just wanted to say, great job. I mean, I appreciate the video that was sent out. I know the community did. That was the feedback I got, and just the forums, and I know you guys have been working hard, so thank you.
And Dr. Shandor, I think this is the sentiment of the board, that we appreciate your leadership. It's been great through this process and the leadership team and everything they've done. I know the four principals that this affected are down in the trenches, but I know your leadership team was down right there with them in the trenches, so working with them through the whole process.
It's definitely a team effort. I mean, everyone has contributed help in his work around the clock. And some of the folks that I would like to throw out, Dave Kilburn and Dave Carwell, these two guys, they were at the school board office one of the evenings till 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, trying to work through some things for us. So it's not just leadership team, it's a multitude of other people who are involved there.
Well, I do appreciate the patience and flexibility of our employees, our families, our staff, and more importantly, our students. They've been very flexible with the situation, but I'm sure a little apprehensive when going to another school. I know I was when I had to do the same thing back in the day. But we do appreciate that. We appreciate their support in all this. We know there's no perfect solution, but we try to make the best solution for all, for the majority that we can, and I think that's what was done here. So thank you. So we're going to move ahead, and we're going to go into -- we have two action items tonight, the first being a resolution authorizing specific procurement, which involves the issue at Grafton High School, and the second one being an approval of transferring funds. So we're just going to cover both of those before we make the -- take it from there.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bowen, and he's going to share some information related to each of those items.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. This evening, we have three items on the procurement resolution requiring our attention. These are related to, as Mr. Richardson said, the Grafton complex, and before we proceed with the procurement, we need the authorization to do so. One thing I want to point out is the 500 Chromebooks. That is also related to the second request for the transfer of funds. I will also say that the county has been extremely supportive in our efforts to process these RFPs and request requisitions timely, and they're working with us right now to actually, as soon as this is approved, those requisitions will be approved, so. And then the second item this evening is for the transfer of funds. Staff is requesting transfer of $280,000 from our Fund 25, which is a cash capital account, an operating account. So if you recall, earlier in the fall, we asked the board to approve the reappropriation of our end-of-year fund balance. The total was $917,000. The Board of Supervisors recently approved that transfer, so that money has come back to us, and we've deposited into that account, so we would like to use some of those funds to help support the ongoing efforts at Grafton Complex. We're very hopeful that a number of these expenditures will be reimbursed, but what we have to do is we have to submit that plan to the insurance company before we reimburse, but we do need to provide ourselves some front money to pay for some of the expenses.
Were some of these dollars already obligated, or not necessarily?
The money that we're moving over had not been obligated. We were going to use those for cash capital, but we're hopeful that this, again, these will be reimbursed by the insurance company.
So first action item we have is a Resolution 211 authorizing specific procurement. Is there a motion?
Yeah. I move to approve Resolution 20-11 to authorize specific procurement.
I second his resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve Resolution 20-11. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Ms. Garalt?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes. So the next action item is consideration of a motion to approve the transfer of funds between major categories. Is there a motion?
I move that we transfer the funds between major categories.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mrs. Garalt and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the transfer of funds between major categories. Mrs. Garalt?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Ms. Ford. Now we're going to move into our presentations. We have three presentations this evening, and the first one relates to our strategic plan and financial literacy. And Dr. Shandor, would you share?
Yes, Ms. Richardson, thank you. I'm going to introduce Dr. Karen Cagle, Associate Director of Educational Technology and Innovation. She is going to provide an update for Goal Two of the FY 1822 Strategic Plan related to financial literacy. Dr. Cagle?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I will share with you our progress towards our strategic plan objective related to financial literacy. The request for an objective to financial literacy and money management was very common when we did our meetings for the strategic plan, created the new strategic plan. Our parents, our teachers, our students all recognized the importance of having some authentic, hands-on activities for kids to do to develop their financial literacy skills. So this course, Economics and Personal Finance, is one of -- is a graduation requirement for the standards and advanced diplomas. It is a course, again, that helps our students develop their financial literacy skills and helps them to hopefully make informed decisions about budgeting, banking, credit, that sort of thing. It is a course that also meets our graduation requirement for all of our students to have an online learning experience because we do -- it is a blended learning course where we integrate online components, and that during the course, students have the opportunity to take two industry certification tests, one on financial literacy and one on workplace readiness.
Are those requirements for course credit for graduation to pass the certification test?
Yes, they do.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
So work on this objective began with the development of a committee that included our coordinator for career and technical education, as well as three of our economics and personal finance teachers, and a local business partner who works with credit unions. And the committee identified some authentic learning experiences, and they revised the curriculum to reflect these. And then in FY 19, we provided training to the teachers, and they implemented the updated curriculum. So, and then the BDOE decided that they -- we needed to update the standards of learning for economics and personal finance. So in October, they released their first revision for parent comment, and they're in the process of revising that for hopefully for next school year, and what you'll see, this is important when we talk about next steps. Here you see just some of the examples of authentic financial literacy experiences that our teachers included in the updated curriculum, and these are all hands-on activities where kids can practice their skills. But I kind of want to focus on one that was taught recently. One of the activities is a real-world scenario where students get a career assigned to them and a family that includes a spouse and kids, and they have to budget for the real world. And this one actually took place at York High School, and it is an app-based simulation that Bayport Credit Union and other credit unions do it as well. It's called the Bite of Reality, and the students have to purchase housing, transportation, food, all of those things, and even some unexpected things, because we all know those happen sometimes and impact the budget. So the students, they're just really, it's really interesting to watch them in these scenarios because we took some -- they have to weigh their needs and their wants, and so we took some feedback from them afterwards, the teacher did, and they were, they really recognized the importance of, they repeated, it's important to save for emergencies, it's important to have savings, not to go spend all your money on those things, expensive things that you want. They found out that children are very expensive, and one student even said that he would prefer to have a dog.
That's credit type.
So they learned a lot of really fun things through this activity. So for our next steps, we want to continue to collect feedback from our teachers as they implement these activities in the classroom and what that impact is on our students. I even had the opportunity recently to talk to one of our students who's taking the course now. She's actually a ninth-grade student. The course is usually for 10th and 11th graders, but she's taken it in ninth grade, and just her feedback on how much she's garnered from the class and things that she didn't realize before, and she highly recommends it for all students. So although we want feedback from teachers, we do want feedback from students as well. We want to reconvene our committee and then look at the updated standards from the state and make any revisions as needed. So that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions you may have or comments.
Just on next steps, so those are near-term. You would expect to reconvene and capture the SOL adjusts in this school year and prep for next?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And what age do you think that this class is best taken at?
And that's interesting, because I've actually talked to some parents as well. So we really usually have 10th and 11th graders take it, but like I said, I spoke with a ninth grader recently, and I think because of her maturity and her mother said that she also reinforces a lot of this at home, so she felt like they had a lot of great discussion at home. So I think it really depends on the student, and our counselors will be able to help determine that.
So I noticed Bayport Credit Union was a community partner, or are you partnering with any other organizations?
For that course? I'd have to look at, I know we've done some lunch and learns with some courses, but I don't remember exactly which ones that we've done. We've had a couple of career panels that our career coaches have done, and a lot of them are done through the economics and personal finance courses. So, but I, the specific ones, I can't name them right off the top of my head.
So, Dr. Cagle, last year, I attended, it was a job fair, I think, at Grafton, and they did a very similar thing where the kids were going around to different businesses were represented there, and they were doing sample interviews for jobs and that sort of thing. And I remember hearing one of them said, "I need a better-paying job. I can't afford this house I live." So yeah, it's a great program, and it sounds like it's, that's sort of like that being expanded and with the app and everything.
Definitely. The app is very helpful.
Okay, good.
And it really connects with the students to the app. That's their...
Oh yeah, that's the way they're working now.
Exactly.
Is it a semester-long course, or is it a full year?
It is a full-year course. All right, Dr. Richardson?
I saw one of the points was the cost for college research. Okay, do they actually go in and see how much loans are going to cost them?
That, well, what's so interesting is the revised SOLs that they're coming out with when they, when they had the reading, that was a one objective in the revised standards of learning that they expanded upon, and that is a component of it. So they've added several parts to that objective to expand it so that they're really looking at post-secondary education, you know, job comparison shopping, that type of thing, and the loan debt is a huge part of it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cagle, for the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Cagle.
That was great. So we're going to move on to our next presentation, and Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share information related to special education program evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We're going to have Dr. Elaine Gould, Director of Student Services, come up to the table, and she is going to introduce members of the Gibson Consulting Group. If you remember, last year, we started along the process of evaluating all, we won an evaluation for all of our special education programs, including the, not only the least restrictive environment and compliance pieces, but the instructional strategies and also the department. You know, does the department meet the needs of the school, and are we organized in the right way? So they've done a lot of work, and I know you've had an opportunity to review their report as well as a little bit about their presentation that we posted. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Gould.
Okay, so Dr. Shandor, good evening, board members, Mr. Richardson, Dr. Shandor. Dr. Shandor has provided a nice introduction to what we've done. So we're just here, I'm very pleased tonight to provide you an update on Objective Nine of Goal Number Two in the 1822 Strategic Plan. So just a little bit about the timeline. So we started this process more than a year ago, fall of 2018. So I just wanted to give you the timeline. We threw a selection process. Gibson Consulting was selected, and then in January, March, January, the work began in 2018. So January through March, this slide kind of shows you a step-by-step of their, of the work that they've done. So in January, they started the development of the survey instruments, the questions for interviews, the questions for the focus group, and then they started in March with the data collection and data analysis phase. So right after spring break, we jumped right in. Last year, after spring break, they came for a site visit where they did an extensive amount of work with the focus groups, met with division leaders, met with teachers, related services providers, the coordinators, myself and other division leaders in the division and interviewed them. They also visited a lot of our schools and did site visits. And then offsite, they did a lot of work as well, which they'll describe to you. In November, they provided us with a draft report, which we reviewed and provided some feedback. And then in January, we received a final report from them, and they are here tonight. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Greg Gibson, who is the Executive Director of the Gibson Consulting Group. Thanks for introducing this team.
Thank you, Dr. Gould, Mr. Richardson, Dr. Shandor, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, behalf of my team, who's going to be, we're all going to be presenting to you tonight, the special education program evaluation. Before I start, I just wanted to extend my thanks to Dr. Gould and her staff, the schools, the school administrators, the teachers, the parents who participated in the surveys, as well as, we actually interviewed some of the parents by phone that were hard to reach through the survey. But I particularly want to thank Dr. Gould. She was so committed to this project from the get-go. We had a really good feeling about a year ago, we sat in this room, and usually when we sit in a room to try to compete for a job, there's usually the administration that's there. There were three principals sitting in this room that were evaluating us, and we knew that that was a really good way to approach this kind of work, was to engage the schools. And so our approach also engaged the schools, and we wanted to thank the school staff, the student services, special education staff. But Dr. Gould, Elaine, I just wanted to say I'm professionally and personally grateful for what you've done to make this project a success. I'm going to introduce the project, and we're going to go, I'm going to assume that you've known, you've already had two introductions of the project, but I'll give you a little more information about the project. Then we're going to jump into the parent input, as well as the staff input, and then the rest of the areas are kind of the three major programmatic areas that we looked at, the organization and management of the department and how it manages the special education program. We're also looking at the program implementation, and there are many aspects to that, which you'll hear about shortly, as well as the behavior programs. And then we're here as late as you need us tonight to answer any of your questions. So I'll tell you a little bit about our firm. We're an education consulting and research firm based in Austin, Texas. We're dedicated exclusively to the K-12 industry nationwide, and we've evaluated more than 75 special education programs over the past 20, 25 years, including other school systems in Virginia. And we've actually done quite a bit of work in Virginia with, on other types of projects. We have 15 employees. We're not a super-large firm, but we're highly specialized, and we also have a group of alliance partners that I'll introduce Cindy here in just a minute. And as Dr. Gould pointed out, we were selected a little over a year ago through a competitive procurement, and I think you'll get a sense once you maybe better understand the objectives. We provide both research and consulting disciplines on this project. It's a really unique project, because usually people ask for one or the other, and this was a fairly unique project that really took advantage of all the resources of our firm. So we were very happy to see the scope of work, and we believe it added more value to the school division. So I'm Greg Gibson. I'm the director of the project. The nice thing about being a smaller firm is I also get to work on the project. So I was actually here for the site work. I went to two schools, I believe. I participated in both schools. I really enjoyed this work, and in addition to being the project director, I was also a consultant. Sitting to my left is Carrie Monkwitz. Carrie is a senior evaluation consultant in our firm, and she also is the leader of our special education practice area, which is probably the fastest-growing of our practice areas right now, as you can imagine. Sitting to her left is Dr. Cindy Ellsbury. Cindy is an alliance partner of ours. We've had her for four years, and we love her. She is, has, she's a former leader of special education program, former superintendent of a large school system in South Carolina, and she has moved to Texas, and we found out, we met, and she's been doing work with us on special ed and other academic program projects for the last four years. So we were thrilled to have her on this project. And sitting to her left is Dr. Jill Carley, who's a research scientist with our firm, and you'll hear from Jill shortly about the parent survey, but she was our lead survey analyst and was responsible for all the aspects of that, as well as being involved in pulling together all the research elements of our work into the final report. Others involved, Eric Booth, senior research scientist, Marshall Garland assisted in the quantitative analysis, and Rex Long was involved in the qualitative analysis, and particularly, he's the one who did the parent interviews, phone interviews of the hard-to-reach parents. So the objective is really twofold. One was to get feedback. One was to collect information from as many sources as we could. So we did that primarily through staff surveys, parent surveys, interviews, the parent interviews, staff interviews. We collected a lot of information, and so that was just to get feedback, and we're presenting a lot of that feedback, and it's, some of it in its raw form, but we also analyzed that feedback to kind of draw some observations about it. And then the second element was to identify opportunities for improving programs and services. So this is kind of the consulting aspect. So you ask for both research and kind of consulting disciplines in your project objective. These are the evaluation questions. Quality of services, and we looked at them kind of in and of themselves. We looked at them in the context of comparisons to benchmarks, peer school divisions, other benchmarks where it made sense, state averages. Obviously, in some of the analysis, we actually found some other benchmarks, because not all the peer school divisions had all the information we needed that was publicly available. So we did reach out in some cases for other applicable benchmarks. We also looked at the organization structure, and a little bit more about that. We looked at the organization chart itself, how special education is staffed, how the schools are supported, just how that, how the program is managed, performance reporting, accountability, all of the things that kind of surround the effective management of any organization. We looked at that in special education. Then we just started at the beginning, actually, before the beginning of the special education process, where we looked at how students are identified. We looked at responsive intervention, even though by definition, responsive intervention is not a special education program that significantly influences that program, so we look at it. And then we looked at how the referral process works, the placement, service delivery, all the way to the completion of services that are identified in the student's individualized education program or IEP. So we did, we also looked at parent satisfaction and staff satisfaction with continuing the services. There's a long list of the domains, and we'll talk about those domains in a minute, of what we asked staff and what we asked your parents to get the necessary feedback. So the approach of our work, you've already heard some things about it. We did a literature review early on in the project. There's a summary of that in the report. We provided the school division with an annotated bibliography of all the details. We did a lot of data analysis. We did a lot of data analysis and benchmarking, as I mentioned earlier. And we picked six school, peers, school divisions to compare you to. I believe it was six, or was it five? I think there were, it's on page one, that's for the report. But we basically, and we worked with the school division, we made the final call, but we worked with the school division to come up with, with peer divisions that made sense from a comparison standpoint, so similar size, similar demographics. And so that, those were used as a benchmark in many of our analyses. We also looked at the individualized education program or IEP files. We did a, just pulled a sample. You'll hear more about how this worked, but it was not a, again, this was not a compliance audit. We were there looking for best practices. We found some best practices. We also found some opportunities for improvement, but the IEP file review is an important part of our work. One of the most important parts of our work is going to schools, and it's one of my favorite things to do, is we learn so much from going to school and visiting with the administrators and actually doing classroom observations. We also did a staff survey, as I mentioned, and a parent survey, which I've also mentioned. So all this work culminated in this report. There's 21 recommendations in the report, and the, all the supporting observations, the report is organized, where you have background information, then the observations that we made, and then the recommendations that follow. So tonight, we're not going to go through every recommendation. We're going to cover the major recommendations. If there's any questions afterwards that you have about any particular element of the report, we'd be happy to answer it. So I'm going to pause now and turn it over to Joe Carley, who's going to talk to you about the parent insights and satisfaction.
Okay. So as Greg noted, we focused in part on parent insights and satisfaction. And to do this, we conducted an online parent survey, sent to over 1,500 parents across the district, parents of students who received special education services. And we asked questions, as part of the survey, we asked questions across four different domains. So satisfaction with instructional services or IEP development, basically everything related to the IEP, right, creating the IEP. Satisfaction with the school environment and family communication. Parent involvement, so some questions about how involved parents are in their child's education, the extent to which they participate in school activities, et cetera. And then we also asked about some transportation services and experience with transportation services. Here, we're going to focus on satisfaction with instructional services and IEP development, as well as satisfaction with school environment and family communication. So in addition to that survey, we also conducted some targeted interviews, or phone interviews of parents, some kind of hard-to-reach, some of our things, right? So our online survey was, online, so required that parents had an email address on file with the school district, sorry, school division. And so we also did a random sample of parents in kind of generally high, that had higher economic disadvantage status, right, or more likely to have, would be economically disadvantaged, who tended to be in, who didn't have an email address on file, maybe only had a phone number. And in some cases, we texted them to follow up to see if they, right, to see if they would be willing to do a phone, phone interview, if they were unwilling to take a call right off the bat. And so we reached out in that, through that method, to 34 different parents, and so did kind of more focused interviews with those parents to understand their concerns as well. So ultimately, we had about a 20% response rate on the survey and 34 interviews from those hard-to-reach parents.
I was just, I noticed the return rate seemed perhaps a little bit low. Is this kind of consistent with other research projects you've had at about 20, 25% with regard to survey?
With regard to parent surveys.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So typically, staff surveys are much higher, and it depends on the, it always depends on the school district or division, but parent surveys generally have relatively low response rates.
And the focus groups were also parent-focused groups or not, or not so much?
The focus groups that you were talking about.
The, the parents were also interviewed, but we did not do parent.
Okay, gotcha. But you did, as you said, you did reach to select groups of parents that were, which is, which is fantastic. Okay, excuse me.
Yeah, I don't know, that's okay. So overall, parents were, were quite satisfied. So they were quite positive in their feedback across the domains that we surveyed. Like I said, I'm going to focus, focus in a little bit on those, the IEP development and instructional services, as well as school environment, family communication. So looking specifically at IEP development, as I noted, parents were generally really quite positive in their, in their responses. They were most positive about their, having kind of thorough discussions at their IEP meetings and feeling like they, like the staff that they worked with were really knowledgeable about the process. Areas in which they felt a little bit less confident or a little less satisfied were kind of those, those follow-ups to the IEP meetings, right, that the school communicates regularly with them about their students' IEP progress. So that was, that is kind of one area that is a little lower than the rest, but is still, just for context, 71% of parents still said that they agree with that. So I think it's important to remember that while it is lower relative to the rest of the questions for IEP development, that it is still relatively high.
Dr. Gould, are there, I know there are progress reports in the semester. Are there additional reporting requirements with a child, with, on an IEP and receiving services in addition to the progress reports?
No.
Not mandated? Okay.
We're required to report progress on IEP goals as often as we provide progress to students.
That's what I thought. Okay, all right, thank you.
So turning to questions about the quality of student services that, that their children received. When asked if they thought that their child was spending an appropriate amount of time in the general education classroom, 89% of parents agreed. So pretty, pretty overwhelming, I think, on that one. And then general education, parents also said that general education teachers are, they agreed that they're implementing all of the pieces of their child's IEP, right, that they're doing all of the things that they're supposed to be doing in the general education setting. And that was eight in 10 parents agreed with that. Parents were a little bit less likely to agree that teachers and staff at their child's school were effectively managing issues of bullying or teasing. And they were a little bit less satisfied overall, saying just with that kind of, kind of overall question about the quality of the services that their child received, about two-thirds of parents agree with that. Focusing in a little bit more on communication, we touched on communication regarding those kind of IEP progress updates for parents. But more generally, parents were pretty satisfied with the communication that they had with their child's school regarding, you know, just sort of more general communication. So they felt like they received written information in an understandable way. They felt like teachers and staff encouraged them to participate in the decision-making process, either as part of the IEP meeting or just kind of more broadly. And then they also felt that the referral and evaluation process was kind of straightforward and easy for them to understand. A slightly lower proportion of parents agreed that teachers and staff regularly shared data about how their child is doing, which kind of underscores that prior question about communication around, yeah, exactly, more frequent communication around the IEP Finally, we asked a few questions about accessibility of resources. So that can be anything related to connecting parents with resources outside of the school, right? Community resources, or even connecting parents with other parents within the school division that might be able to provide support in common ways, right? They might understand what they're going through and so can say, oh, hey, I've done that before. I can help you. Here's how. And so we asked parents if the school gives them the help that they need to play an active role in their child's education, and 58% of parents agreed. When we asked them about whether or not their, their child's school is connecting them with those community organizations to help them participate more or to provide mutual support, parents were a little bit less likely to agree. So roughly one-third of parents were saying that the district, the division, pardon me, is providing those kind of additional, we call sometimes like wraparound services, right, to connect them with additional services in the community and with others who have similar experiences.
From your standpoint, was it more of a communication factor, or was it that those services aren't necessarily available, or a combination perhaps?
Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the providing additional services, or the school connects parents to organizations that serve, because we do, we do have regional services that I suspect that we take a great deal of energy to inform and.
We do. Our, our school social workers connect parents to outside organizations for either health or mental health. They, a tremendous number of resources that they're connecting. We also have our transition coordinator, who does not work with our families around transition services for students with disabilities, either directed through accessing the waivers and also outside agencies related to employment and so on. So we do have some communication, but I think that we clearly have some additional work to do.
Sure, sure, sure.
In that area.
Okay, all right.
So as far as recommendations are concerned, the, the recommendation that we would make here, sort of based on the survey and the interviews that we did with parents, would be really helping connect parents with the resources on a more consistent basis. So maybe it is, as you're noting, just a matter of communicating out that information to them, and those resources are available, and just making that more, you know, more readily apparent to them.
And we message that, you bet.
Yeah. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Monkwitz to talk a little bit about the staff. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time this evening. So in addition to the parent survey, we also did a survey of the division's staff, so all of the special education stakeholders within the school system. The groups of individuals that we surveyed include the special education teachers, all of the other teachers, school leaders, so your principals, school administrators, special education paraeducators, related service providers. Those are your speech language pathologists, your occupational therapists, your social workers, psychologists, et cetera. And then school board office staff. So that is everybody that was within the office of student services, as well as other administrators within the central office here. So the survey really covered six domains, similar to the parent survey. And the questions are really designed to assess parent satisfaction with really all of the major special education processes related to student identification, evaluation, placement, IEP development, and then just service delivery in the specialized programs, as well as in your inclusion classrooms. We also, on the survey, asked questions around staff satisfaction levels with the professional learning that they receive, with the supports they receive from the central office, opportunities for general education, special education teachers to collaborate together. So we've kind of made some assessments around that. And then we had some broader questions around just their overall job satisfaction, how likely they were to recommend the division as a place to work to maybe some of their friends or family members, and then how likely they were to want to continue to be here in two years from now, or even possibly for the rest of their career. And then I'll just pause, and I will say, in terms of just overall job satisfaction levels, the results are really high. I think on average, 87% of staff that responded to the survey said that they were highly satisfied with their jobs, which I thought was pretty great. So in total, we issued 1,600, just over 1,600 staff surveys, and we achieved a 67% response rate, so obviously much higher than the parent surveys. And that 67% response rate, we were pretty happy with. So that was along the lines of what we would expect. When we disaggregated the results of the survey, what we found was that the surveys we received back were proportional to the surveys that went out. So for example, special education teachers comprised about 10% of the surveys that went out to staff, and then when we got the surveys back, they actually comprised about 10% of the responses from special education teachers. So we feel pretty confident in terms of just, again, our overall response rates from the different groups of employees that we were trying to get input from. And so what we did find was that, again, we looked at, we were able to disaggregate the results in different ways. So job roles was one of them. We also looked at how the results came back in terms of school levels, so we could make some assessments around elementary business, middle school staff felt this way, high school staff, or even school board office staff. And then even within school levels, we made some, did some analysis around just variations across, you know, the different schools within that level. And really, what we found was that across a lot of questions, we didn't, in some cases, we didn't find much variation in response rates, but depending on what we were asking and the nature of the question, we found wide variations. And so we don't go into a lot of that in this section. Cindy's going to talk through a couple of slides in her section. But in the report, what we did try to do was just present back to you those responses that were most interesting and most relevant and most impactful. So just a little bit of background information about this school division. So just, I'm actually, I'll start at the bottom here. So first of all, your special education student population has been increasing pretty dramatically over the past five years. It's been about 18%. And when you compare that to your overall enrollment, which has just grown at a modest 2.1%, that's a pretty significant increase in your students with disabilities. So as of the last year of data that we looked at, there are about just over 1,400 students with disabilities. Actually, I think this year, it's closer to 1,500. And that represents about 11.2% of your total population. But even with all of that growth, you're still below the statewide average in terms of representation. The statewide average is 13.2%. And then you can see the chart here where we've listed the comparator school divisions that Greg mentioned earlier, that we're looking at throughout our report. And you can see, obviously, York County in orange is, just again, in terms of representation, slightly below some of the other school divisions. So that's really just for context, not making really many judgments around that. And when we looked at program expenditures, special education total spending off funds is about $16 million of your total operating budget, which is about 10%. And when we looked at just, again, this is just a total dollars divided by total head count of students. It's kind of a modest 1.6% increase year over year. One of the things, one of the requirements by IDEA is what we call maintenance of effort, and I'm not sure how familiar you all are with that legislation, but essentially, what it requires is that school systems maintain sort of in aggregate the same baseline level of spending year over year, unless there are certain exceptions that can be made that are allowable. And so what we found was just over the past, I think, six or seven years that we looked at the data, is that the division does meet its maintenance of effort requirements every year. So a little more background information there. So when it comes to the organizational structure, again, one of the major areas of focus of our study was looking at the organizational structure, staffing levels, and then roles and responsibilities of the staff that were included in the scope of our review. One of the first observations we had when starting to look at the organizational chart was that the director has a very wide span of control. And when we say span of control, that just means the number of direct supervisory reports. And so by our count, it was 22 positions when we were in here doing our analysis. And based on our professional opinion, just, again, working with school systems all over, that just seems to be a very high number, especially given the scope of our responsibilities and the highly compliance nature of the special education program. We also did some comparisons to some of the other school divisions where we were able to get publicly available data. And what we saw, just with some of the data that we looked at, is that they also tend to operate with more narrow spans of control with those director-level positions. So when we first came in and we asked for data, the, the office of student services didn't have a documented organizational chart, not totally uncommon. But the reason that's important is because we look to organizational charts as a way to, one, first, identify whether spans of control may be too wide, maybe too narrow. We also look at the organizational structure to see how functionally aligned some of the functions within the department may be. When we kind of developed the organization When we kind of developed the organizational chart, the one that's actually in our report, we did that based on staffing data and then information that we learned through interviews with the program administrators. Again, what we found was wide spans of control for the director. We also found that some of the key functions for which the department's staff should be held accountable weren't clearly articulated in the organizational chart. So some of those responsibilities were spread out across multiple positions. And I'll talk about the coordinators in just a second. And when you have that happen, what happens is that you don't really have a clear line of authority and accountability for some of those functions. And as a result, they may not be happening or be held accountable for happening. So the one example I can think of off the top of my head is just around data validation, data reliability. There's no position right now in the organizational structure that is solely responsible for that, and that has created some risks, which show up later in our presentation tonight. So the coordinator positions, which I just talked about, so these are the positions. When we were here, there were six coordinators, and they were primarily responsible for supporting campuses and really around all of the processes related to special education. So from student identification and evaluation, IEP development, they attend some of the IEP meetings. They're really sort of that support linkage, I guess, between the school board office and the schools. But what we found, and actually, in the way the coordinators were organized, is they were each responsible for anywhere between like one and four schools that they directly supported. And so what we found in our review after getting feedback, anecdotal feedback, and just better understanding that position, is that they don't seem to be operating as effectively as they could be, and that's for a variety of, a couple of important reasons. I'm talking to Greg. I know you're kind of really tired and probably don't want to be here on this.
You're fine, take your time.
So anyway, so these positions have had really high turnover. So by our count, when we did our analysis, like half the staff has turned over within the past year or two. As a result of that turnover, what's happened is that they're not really actually around amongst the positions. They also don't have any formal training in their day-to-day activities, so it's more about sort of on-the-job training. They might get paired off, like a new coordinator position might get paired off with another coordinator position and say, oh, here's how we do things. But what we heard consistently was that there was no structured training program for them. When you combine that with high staff turnover, the end result is really just inconsistent application of procedures out at the schools, because everybody's doing things a little bit differently. One other thing that surfaced from those interviews is they spend a lot of time attending eligibility meetings for special education students and five of four staff. And I think that may have changed recently. You guys might have already been addressing some of that.
Yes.
And so that was a lot of the feedback we got. So it wasn't just like how they were deployed, but just in a way that those positions were really supporting the campuses. The other piece of analysis that we focused on was we looked at the sufficiency of staffing levels of your special education teachers and your paraeducators. So regarding the teachers, just a couple of points there. Two metrics that we looked at were student-staff ratios, and then we also looked at average caseloads. And that was data that we didn't calculate, but that was data that was provided to us. And kind of in both of those, what we found was that, again, there was wide variation across the different campuses. And regarding the caseloads, the average caseloads were actually below the state maximum, I think for all of the schools except for one. So what that tells us is that there's opportunities for increased staffing efficiency out at the campuses with your teachers. Regarding the paraeducators, so you can see by the numbers there, there's actually more paraeducators than there are special education teachers. And for us, whenever you kind of reach that tipping point, like more than the 50%, a little red flag goes up, because sometimes what school divisions do is when they need to increase staff, they tend to kind of want more bodies out at the schools. And really, there's a lot of research that shows that paraeducators, and they play an important role, so I don't want to downplay that, but when they're not well-trained, there's a lot of research that can, that actually shows that they can actually act as a barrier between the student and the general education teacher. And they may actually inhibit their participation in the general education classroom. So again, when we start to see numbers here, it's probably something that we want you guys, I'll get to it in the recommendations, but just be thinking your staffing mix is important for the program. So the last bullet really is in reference to case load maximums for your related service providers. And what we found was that the division, I mean, I'm sorry, the Office of Student Services didn't have clearly defined caseload maximums for the different service providers. And each one is different, right? So your, it should be like acceptable caseloads for your speech-language pathologist that would be different from your school psychologist who actually serves all students. So that was, again, another improvement opportunity. So as I mentioned already, special education is obviously very compliance-driven. And so one area that, where I do think, and I know Elaine has been working on this, but is we did not find evidence of a comprehensive special education handbook or a manual that really pulls together all of the federal and state policies, the board, I'm sorry, federal and state law, board policies, just really detailed operating guidelines that would assist staff in the day-to-day responsibilities around all of the major processes of special education, identification, placement, developing the IEPs. So there were some that exist, so I don't want to imply that there weren't any procedures that exist, but a lot of the anecdotal feedback that we heard, and then also just in our own review, they weren't really at a level of detail that would guide a new employee in like, this is how you do your job. And again, when you're dealing in a highly regulated environment, timelines are extremely important, data is extremely important. So this is a huge area, I think, where, when we solidify that, and I know Elaine has been working on that for probably the better part of the year, so I know that's in the works. And then just one other thing around the job descriptions. We also did do a review of all the job descriptions that were included for all the key positions in the scope of the study. And what we found was some of them didn't exist. Many of them were more than 10 years out of date, probably as a result of that, that some of the actual roles and responsibilities that were articulated on the job descriptions didn't align to what staff was actually doing. So again, another opportunity to kind of get the documentation up to date. And then lastly, throughout the course of our review, there were some areas where we had some data integrity concerns. When we found issues with the data, we brought them up to Elaine, who, when it was confirmed that was an issue, it was actually immediately corrected. So we don't have any ongoing concerns from that perspective. But we, part of the root cause of the issue, as we understand it, is really having to do with your campus-based staff, your data entry clerks, your registrars, those folks that are responsible for entering student information into your ASPEN system, which ultimately gets transferred to your Virginia IEP system. So more training, more oversight. And again, we'll talk about recommendations in that area. So the last kind of improvement opportunity in this area that I wanted to talk to you about tonight was related to a potential for increased revenues related to Medicaid reimbursements. So you can see here how York compares to some of these other divisions, and I will just go on the record now, saying that you all have an economically disadvantaged percent, around 22% of students. And I know that these other divisions have higher percentages, so that's obviously not totally unexpected that we would see that. But I will tell you, in our experience also working with other school systems, similar in demographics, we've seen much higher Medicaid reimbursement rates. And when I get to the recommendations about two slides, I'll tell you where I think some of those opportunities might be. Okay, so regarding the recommendations, so we think obviously that the Office of Student Services should be reorganized, but we weren't so explicit in our recommendations to tell you exactly how to do that, because we understand that different things work successfully in different places. And so what we do recommend is that you do reorganize the office, rethink how some of the positions are used, and when you do that, you follow certain principles. So number one, I would say, when you think about reorganizing, what I first would suggest is reorganizing around sort of these functional responsibilities, because then you have sort of an accountability structure and system in place. So you could have like a functional responsibility of student identification, evaluation, and placement. And so all of that sort of accountability for ensuring that those processes are sort of aligned under a supervisory position. You could have another one around behavior programs. And we don't want to be totally explicit and tell you how to do it, but again, I think if you adhere to principles of good design in areas of special education, that's kind of the right way to go. The other major principle is spans of control. Obviously, you don't want them too wide, you don't want them too narrow, and it really is just going to depend on the scope of responsibilities of that supervisory position. Once the department is reorganized, obviously, job descriptions would need to be revisited, probably created in some cases, and certainly updated. And then we also recommend that you have a formal organizational chart to actually graphically illustrate how the division, or how the office is organized. It's a great communication tool, you can put it on your website. Visually, it's also good for showing accountability for certain functions. Again, regarding the use of paraeducators, I mean, number one, I think that we need to make sure that those that we have get the professional learning that they need, so that we can assure that student outcomes are what we want. I also think as enrollment continues to grow, special education enrollment continues to grow, and you all are adding teachers, and you're adding paraeducators, rethink your staffing mix, and I would say not so heavily weighted towards your paraeducators. But again, there's a lot of research shows that a certified teacher is going to be, that investment is going to be more valuable than even two paraeducators. So again, just something to consider. And the caseload maximums for your related service providers, clearly, we think you guys need to establish them. But really, when you're, they need to account for direct services, for indirect services, time travel between schools, time communicating with parents, time to complete required paperwork. And a lot of school divisions, when they're trying to, it's a really hard metric to come up with, like what is the right number? What is the right caseload for these positions? Because this student may require intensive services and this student may not. So it's not like a total headcount is the same amount of effort. And so some school divisions do like a time task study, and so that helps them develop caseloads that are actually reasonable for the school system. And then having a dedicated sort of data entry clerk, when we were having earlier conversations, I think this might be an area where you guys may have made some progress. Last I heard, that there was a position already being advertised. I'm not sure what the status is. But this is something that we think that you all should do, that, not to say that that position should only work in student services, but I definitely think this is a staffing addition that could really add value. And then just regarding the potential opportunity for more Medicaid reimbursements, so typically what we find is that when there are missed opportunities, it's usually due to parents not, you know, not getting signatures and approval from parents, parents not getting prescriptions from their doctors. It could be from the systems that you're using, where the staff that's providing those services might not be able to identify which students are eligible for Medicaid services. And it could honestly just be that, like, staff are stretched and they might not have the time to fill out all the paperwork that's needed to document their services and submit for reimbursement. So it could be a combination of a lot of these things, but those are the areas that we think you could look a little bit closer to see if we could up up those numbers. Okay, so Cindy's actually going to do the next two sections, but before I turn it over to her, I'm just going to give you guys just a quick overview on the program profile. So one of the great things that we found when we were looking at the data is there definitely is a trend towards more inclusion, which is always a positive thing, right? Because we want our special, our students with disabilities to be in the general education classroom, exposed to the general education teacher as much as possible. So we were very happy when we looked at our student-level data to see those trends. And the other thing that we wanted to bring up is that, and you, I'm sure, already know this, York County is one of the highest-performing school systems in Virginia. And in students, when we compared how students here, special education students here do in, compared to students in other school divisions, clearly, they outperform them. So two things I kind of want to point out around this chart. So what this is, just to kind of orient you, is obviously, these are program passing rates for English reading and that. York County is the orange dot. The red dots are the comparator school divisions that we use for different reasons throughout our report. The gray is all of the other school divisions that we did not compare you guys to, because they were probably too small or did not align demographically. The bottom access is the percentage of students that are economically disadvantaged. And so if you kind of look where York is, everybody to the right of York has higher percentages of economically disadvantaged students. There's a few, one, two, three, four, four to six, seven maybe, school divisions where there are students with disabilities, they're in a school system that has a higher ECODIS percentage, and they're performing better. That's always interesting to us, right? Because what are, what are they doing? And again, they were probably really small, which is why we didn't explicitly look at them. But again, what this tells me is while you guys are doing good academically, there's room for improvement, I think. I think there's always room for improvement. And this chart kind of illustrates that when we factor in the demographics of your student One other just positive trend that we saw, so this, this chart represents graduation rates and dropout rates. Obviously, the top is the graduation rate. The very top line is your non-disabled students, and then the orange line trending upward is your students with disabilities. So you can see that for graduation rates, your non-disabled students have stayed relatively flat, but your students with disabilities is trending in a positive direction. So that's obviously great news. And this is a two-year review, but obviously, we wanted to point this out for you guys. And then the dropout rates, we see a similar pattern where the, where the gen ed population of kids has decreased, and then the special education students are also showing a positive trend.
I have a question real quick before you turn it over. Looking at the improvement opportunities, it was, you had a slide, it was on, it was 29, I think it was, lower Medicaid reimbursement revenue per student. There was a big disparity with all the jurisdictions, with the exception of, with Suffolk City, because they went to $243 per person. Do you know what they're doing that these other divisions aren't doing? Do they have a computer program, or just a person dedicated to track that? Because I know it's a lot of tracking with, I didn't know if you knew, because that was a pretty large number.
I don't know. I will tell you, their ECODIS is around 48%. And so that probably accounts for a lot of it when you've got more. So again, the numbers that we show here, we don't want to be misleading.
Yeah, more focused on.
This is just a metric, but it's total dollars divided by total students.
Right, right.
And so with a higher ECODIS percentage of kids, or higher percentage of kids that are Medicaid-eligible, you're going to...
Right, but we recognize that there are opportunities for us to improve in this area for Medicaid reimbursement.
But also, to your point, is a lot of school systems do have a system in place where it makes it really easy for those related service providers to go and document their services. It's automated, it links right to the billing. And I'm not sure exactly what you guys have there, but that is definitely one way to have efficiencies.
You answer my question, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I was, reading the report and even listening to you talk, I think one thing that stuck out to me is changing the org chart, making sure that clear expectations and defined roles will probably just trickle through every single one of these recommendations. So I think that's really, I think gives me a lot of hope that it could be a timely, a timely thing, obviously, a lot of these recommendations taken care of.
Not only that, I think the other recommendations, the successful implementation is dependent on those organizational changes happening. And if those don't happen, I think you're going to, I think it's going to be harder to implement some of the other recommendations. That's how important that is.
And you keep saying that, you know, these things are already in the works too, and so that's really hopeful too, that it's, we're taking the recommendations and rolling right away, so.
That was amazing to see, that Elaine didn't wait until the ink dried on the report. I mean, it was, all things were, this was a long project, and things were starting to change during our project, so we were pleased to see that.
On organizational design, do you see wide variations? I mean, it's needs-driven, but they're primarily functionally aligned, right? I mean, when you look at peer divisions and districts, or does it vary?
The, there were a lot of lower-level positions reporting directly to the director position. Usually, you have an intermediate level of supervisors that are more functionally defined. So we defined those functions in the report. We didn't define the position level, that's really up to you to define, but as Carrie pointed out earlier... But as Carrie pointed out earlier, you didn't see the word curriculum or, or special service, or what was the one? Data. There was no data analyst position. And so we, you expect to see certain things on the organization chart, so you can hold those positions accountable for that particular function. And so it just, what it was, is putting pretty much all the responsibility of everything was ultimately in the director's job description because it wasn't really spread out among coordinator positions.
I was just going to say, I would also add that the way I've typically seen things, well, one, it kind of depends on the side of the school system, right? How many bodies they have. But again, if you think about the role of the central office in terms of, like, supporting schools, like, that's what they should be doing. Oftentimes, it doesn't matter whether it's special ed or any other function. Sometimes you see them organized by sort of cluster, right? Elementary, middle, high, you're going to take these schools, you're going to do everything for elementary schools, you're going to do everything for middle. The alternative is by function, right? And so it's really one or the other. And I would say, right now, at least regarding the coordinators, you guys seem to be more cluster-aligned, right? Like, these coordinators support these schools, and they do soup to nuts for those schools they support. And I think what we're seeing is that's not working. Having something more functional, but add more accountability for those processes to, you know, make sure that they're being implemented, you know, with fidelity, with consistency at all of those campuses. So again, we've seen them successful in both ways, but it just kind of, everybody's a little bit different.
I would be interested to know about other schools, regionally, the divisions or districts, how they're, how they're organized. I know you'll do that.
We did look at those. Did look at several charts of your peer divisions, so.
Do you recall generally functionally aligned, or?
I think they were more functionally aligned, but the span, the span of control was what was most noticeable.
Got it, got it.
You have student services, and special education is part of that. So not all school divisions have the exact same things. You have to be careful when you're comparing organization charts, but the, the span of control spoke loudly.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. Very helpful.
I have a question. The communication was an issue with, with the parents. That they didn't think they were getting enough, often enough, correct? But are they calibrated with what the mandates are?
Are you talking about the progress reports on the IEP? Is that who you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, they are. We're doing, so about every four and a half weeks, they get a progress report on their student's progress report towards their IEP goals. And so we, those are aligned with the report cards that go out, the interim reports that go out. So we're required to report to parents of students with disabilities as frequently as we do for students. So every four and a half weeks, they do get a report.
And that seems like enough. There's measurable progress in it.
There are some, there are some, for our students that, you know, may not be able to communicate, however they want. They get daily communication. We have special logs that these teachers have created. They're brilliant. So, you know, it really does vary by, you know, the disability as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We've shared a lot of information. We've shared a lot of information, and I want to kind of bring this to a conclusion by giving you some improvement opportunities that we found at the school level where the implementation is taking place, and then some recommendations in those areas.
Am I on the right slide?
Yes, you're on the right slide. So we talked a little bit, several speakers have talked about response to intervention, and we call that RTI, response to intervention. So it's not a special ed function, as you heard, but it's very important. It's like the gateway into special education. And it's federally required that you try interventions in the gen ed environment if a student is struggling, either academically or behaviorally. And so it's important because it, it's important that you don't over-identify students as being a student with a disability. So you want to try everything that you possibly can at the gen ed level before there's a referral to special education. So RTI is very important. And as you can see on this slide, this was from your staff. It's a little hard to read at the bottom, but the, they're saying, staff would ask if they thought the RTI process was effective at their school. And you can see there's variation. So some schools seem to be doing it very well, others not so well. And it's interesting to note, the lowest scores down in that lower section are the elementary schools. And we do believe that that's probably connected with staffing because you have two positions, ACIs and ACCs that operate at the secondary level to assist with that process. But those aren't, those aren't in place at every elementary school. There are, there are some part-time positions at a couple of the elementary schools. But assistant principals are stepping in there, and so I think looking at that staffing may be an area that might help with this, what your staff perceives as effectiveness of RTI. Also, it's important that students don't get stuck in that RTI cycle. And so they stay there, and you try, and you try, and you try, and the referral doesn't happen. So it's important to stay on top of that. Another improvement opportunity was seen in the IEP files that we reviewed, that Greg referenced. There were, we looked at 25 files. It was a random selection of files, but we tried to look at all your campuses. We tried to look at a variety of disabilities, so we got a good picture, a good cross-section of your entire division. And so most of those IEPs were well-written, were measurable, were adequate. And so I want to commend you all those. But we did find some patterns. And we, what you're going to see here is not what we saw, one isolated case, but some patterns that we saw that are of import. The first is measurable goals. If you set goals for students that they're to accomplish during the year, you really can't tell if they've met those goals unless you can measure them. And so we had some cases where the goals were a statement of a, of a need that a student had. They were probably appropriate, but they weren't measurable. And that kind of goes to the next bullet, which is the, we call it the PLAF, but it's the present level of academic achievement and functional performance. That's the baseline. That's where a student starts. So whatever that IEP team needs to set the annual goals, they look at that PLAF. They should. That's the starting place. This is where the student is in reading. This is where they are behaviorally. And you need to be able to measure from that point to the end of that IEP term to see if that student has met that goal. And so if those measurements are missing, you really aren't able to measure whether the student is making progress. The annual revision timelines, in most cases, those were met, but by federal law, the IEP has to be reviewed at least once per year. And there were a couple of situations where that did not occur, and it's hard. You have to get everybody together, setting meetings. Sometimes parents kind of drag their feet. But that's a real important compliance issue. And then mastery of goals and objectives. Again, it goes back to the measuring and ensuring that students were mastering those goals. When we looked at the IEPs, there, in the files, there are progress reports. And so we looked at those progress reports, and, and we looked at more than one year. And so we could see whether those students were actually making progress or not. And there were some students' files that did not show any movement toward mastery. Another improvement opportunity was in the area of consistency of placement decisions. And you can see there's a wide variation there in the elementary schools or at the bottom. And again, you can see that that's where there didn't seem to be as much consistency in placement of students into special education. And I think, again, that goes back to the staffing to handle that, that particular responsibility. In the area of inclusion, we felt like general ed classes, the ones we observed, had high percentages of students with, with special needs. So I'm going to include with that students with disabilities, as well as those students who were struggling. And clustering is a very common practice. You want to do that so you can put students together and meet their needs without a lot of staffing. But there is a point where the numbers get so high that it becomes difficult for the general education teacher to meet the needs of so many students with significant academic or behavioral needs. So we believe that's something you need to look at. Also, just the whole inclusion concept. We, we did see a couple of classrooms where there would be a special educator in that classroom with the gen ed teacher, but they had segregated the students with disabilities and were teaching them separately. And that kind of defies the whole idea of, of inclusion and students working along with their non-disabled peers. Whole group instruction was the primary instructional design that we saw in the classrooms we visited. There were others, but it, the whole group was used in a significant amount of classrooms. And it's really hard to meet the needs of students with different abilities with lecture or with whole group. And so using small group interventions, using digital content and software to differentiate is a way to impact that instructional design and meet those needs. We did not see much use of instructional technology in the classrooms, although the technology was there. So I think you have done a good job of providing that. It just, we did not see it being used in very great amounts. And we saw some co-teaching when we were in the classrooms, but we didn't see some of the best practices, best practices for co-teaching. We did in a couple of classrooms, but I think there's additional work that needs to be done to ensure that teachers understand what co-teaching is, what it looks like, and, and how to know that co-teaching is happening as it should. So I'm going to get to the recommendations now. Things we think you can do, and hopefully to do quickly and, and see some major changes quickly, is, is getting clear response to intervention procedures and processes. Giving the schools the tools, the forms, all the guidelines that they need to ensure that it's done correctly. And then monitoring that, monitoring to make sure that it's occurring, because it's such an important component as it is the gateway that I mentioned earlier. And then develop standards for your IEPs so that everyone knows what is expected to be in those IEPs, and then conduct audits. You know, it's, it's always, you know, trust but verify. We want to go in and ensure that those things are happening. And I've sat in Dr. Ghul's seat, and I know that when you're trying to train large numbers of people, you know, you have to keep retraining and retraining to make sure that as people come and go and as they develop in their understanding, they all know the proper procedures. And then giving IEP teams good instruction on placement of students so that they understand the continuum and all the different options, and understand that a division is required to offer a full continuum and not to put any ceilings on that in any way. And then giving schools a model for supporting instruction inclusion in the gen ed setting, and that goes back to the co-teaching. Make sure y'all have done training, you're promoting co-teaching, but make sure that teachers understand how that works and how it should look. That's kind of the instructional side, but behaviorally, we see some opportunities for improvement as well. And if you look at this, I want to commend you because if you look at the at-risk, these are state measurements. There's a 4A and a 4D component that is measured by the state. And in over-representation of special education students being suspended from school for more than 10 days, look at your trend. That's the green line. You have significantly decreased that. And that's a real positive step to see that you're working with those students that have, that have disabilities, that struggle behaviorally. And you're not just suspending them from school, and you're providing that education and meeting that requirement. And then, just, this is really outside of the special education realm, but you also had a positive trend in the constancy, except for the one year, you see the yellow has maintained, you've maintained constancy in keeping the suspension of African-American students from your schools at the, the state level that is recommended. So two kudos to you guys. We do feel like you've got some opportunities in behavior interventions. In some of the IEP files that we saw, there were students who very clearly had significant behavioral issues, but not all of them had a behavior intervention plan. And that's really important. And again, it goes back to measuring progress. If a student is struggling with their behaviors, you want to measure where they are, and then you want to proactively teach their appropriate behaviors, and then measure to see if they've made progress. And then, and that kind of gets into the next one about the behavior intervention plan. So our recommendations there are that you build a behavior support system that is internal so that your staff is well-trained and they know gen ed and special ed, know how to deal with the behavioral issues that walk into their classrooms. And so that involves training, that involves coordinating, the support that, that teachers have when students misbehave in their classrooms. And looking internally first before you look at, at external provision of those behavioral supports. Anytime you go out of district, the costs are greater than if you serve them in district. And so that, that's certainly an opportunity for you. And then, I don't know how, we didn't see a lot about SEL, social and emotional learning, but it's probably one of the fastest-growing initiatives in public education today. There's just recognition that that is critical because so many students walk into our classrooms and they don't know appropriate behaviors. And we can punish, and punish, and punish, and discipline, and discipline, but we, if we don't stop and teach them the appropriate behaviors, they're probably not going to see the progress that they need to. So we really recommend that you look at social skills curriculum, look at this social-emotional learning component because that's even more important for students with disabilities than it is those that don't struggle with that. And you saw the surveys that showed the bullying and teasing was still a concern of parents. So we'd like to ask if you have any questions for any of us on the team.
Ask most of mine along the way, but any other questions from the board for the...
So the surveys that you sent out to staff and to parents, is that something that the division will now have access to, having that exact same survey so that we can give it periodically to find out how we're doing? Okay.
Yes.
Cheers.
Yeah, the survey instruments are included as appendices. Yeah, so yeah, you have all of the...
I had a question about the RTIs that are lower in elementary, and I'm talking about the academic ones. Are those interventions mainly due to, would it be reading or math? Those are the, seem to be the two big academic hurdles for, for elementary school students. Did you, were you able to differentiate which one was higher, or which one's tougher, I guess I should say?
Not really, because the data was not real...
Wasn't specific.
Available and for us to analyze real carefully. And so I think that's one of, that's why we have a recommendation that you really support that RTI system with data analysis and processing.
It's also important that the graphic that was shown was, was not RTI performance based on our assessment of those schools. It was the reception of staff at those schools. And that's a very important distinction.
And I would just, to build on a little bit of Cindy's point, is when we started this process, we asked for RTI data. Typically, like, what we like to collect is sort of a point-in-time analysis snapshot. And kind of year over year, we look at the numbers or the percentage of kids that are in tier two and tier three by reading, math, behavior. Data wasn't available because it's not centrally tracked and monitored. And so I think you guys might be pursuing, looking at, you can actually purchase a module from Virginia IEP, and that is from one of our recommendations in the report, to be able to track that information. But if you're not centrally tracking it, then you're not going to know how to support schools in improving their practices.
Date on the cycle.
Is it traditionally low, like, the, the staff response to the RTIs and stuff like that? Is it traditionally lower in the elementary schools because students are first, that's a first experience in school, and they're figuring out who needs the behavior plans and things like that? Is that normal to see that much of a rate? Is that normal to see that much of a rate between elementary to middle to high or?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure we've ever.
Well, I can just give you my thought. I actually would expect it to be lower at high schools because I think RTI at high schools is very difficult to implement. I think it's, we have yet to go anywhere that they do a great job at RTI. I mean, I think that's something everybody struggles with. But at the high school level, I think it's just very difficult to implement. So I would expect to see more fidelity with that program, just in generally speaking, at an elementary level.
I think Elaine has a one last slide.
Yes, I have one more slide. I wanted to talk to you all about big steps. And so we've outlined some where we're going to head towards this. So later this week, now that it's been presented to the board, there will be an announcement that goes out to families that will indicate that the program evaluation report is available online, not just to our parents or students with disabilities, but to everyone.
It's me, I'm sorry. I was trying to get it back on track.
And then, we, I've already started talking to folks about being on that program improvement team for special education. And so we will continue to form that team, get people on board, get them to read the report. And that team will consist of veteran principals. We want people who've been in the division for a while to participate on those teams, assistant principals, our student services staff. And we'll also keep parents involved in this process throughout. Okay? Then we will, at the March, we have a March 17 meeting. We'll update our special education advisory committee at that meeting. We're going to do that while we have plans to do at the learning conference that we choose. March 1st to May 30th, we're going to be working on this. There'll be several work sessions where we'll be engaged in prioritizing the recommendations. We'll be setting goals. We'll be creating action plans, and we'll be assigning those buckets to individuals who will be responsible for seeing that those recommendations and goals are realized. And then June 1st, we'd like to come back and provide you with an update and a copy of our action plan for moving forward into FY '21 and for the forthcoming three years. Do you have any further questions?
Thank you, Dr. Ghul. Appreciate that. And I'd like to thank the Gibson Group, Mr. Gibson and his team for everything they've done, done a lot of hard work. The board, I know, previous board before this new board, one of their goals was to evaluate some of the programs that was put in our strategic goals, our plan, to evaluate a lot of our programs. We evaluated SOA since then, our gifted program, our special education program. So this is something that was needed to be done because a lot of these programs hadn't been evaluated in some years.
How many years?
Yeah, how many years has it been since our last evaluation?
I was in the last one, and I was a assistant principal.
Okay.
Was there a third-party assessment? I mean, was it a third-party assessment or internal?
We did more of an internal.
Yeah, that's right, okay. These are third-party, I commend the division. These are absolutely.
Yeah, I think you get a lot of good information. Thank you.
I would also like to thank this group. I feel like I got to know them very well, the attention that they gave to this project. And, I mean, we met bi-weekly for, from an hour to two hours. I've just so much enjoyed working with them, and they're so knowledgeable. And this report is very, I believe it's spot-on in the recommendations, working hard.
All right, we don't normally do this. We don't normally take a recess. We're going to take a short five to 10-minute recesses so the group, because I know you all are traveling, and I'm sure you want to get back and get packed. Tomorrow morning, if you get out of here in about a few hours, we're going to take a short recess for five to 10 minutes.
Okay.
Back in session, and we're going to move on to our last topic for the, on the agenda this evening, and that's our FY '21 operating budget. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members. So I'm going to take you through the FY '21 superintendent proposed budget. Mr. Bowen will interject midway through the presentation. So it's my privilege to present the FY '21 proposed budget. Before I begin, I want to thank Mr. Bowen and his team for leading the work on the budget process. I also want to thank our cabinet members, executive leadership team, our principals, school staff, and community members, all of these folks participating in the process of providing us information to guide this budget. So I want to begin by sharing a few successes as well as some areas that are challenging for us. Our team shared some of our school successes with you this year during our strategic plan updates and our joint retreat with the board of supervisors last week. I'll briefly recap a few of them now. All 19 of our schools are fully accredited. Our on-time graduation rate is 97%, and that's the highest in the last five years. And we exceed the state average by 5.5 percentage points. Math pass rates, all students is 93.4%, and that's second highest in the state. Our reading pass rate, YCSD is one of only three school divisions in the state that demonstrated pass rates in the 90s for reading when growth and progress are factored in. Now, when we look at some of our challenges, as you can see on the screen, national and state teacher shortage, I'm going to get into a few, you'll see some charts and graphs as we move forward. But I did want to share the 2019-20, the 10 critical shortage teaching endorsement areas in Virginia. Dr. Vlad Duz provided this information earlier. I'll just provide the top five to you. Special education teachers remains number one. Elementary education, pre-six teachers remain second. Career and tech ed teachers is third. Middle grades, education teachers six through eight, and then high school math teachers, I'm sorry, middle and high school math teachers, six through 12. We also have a bus driver shortage, as you've heard us talk about for the last couple of years. All of our substitute drivers are now driving buses. However, the general assembly is considering legislation permitting bus drivers who have retired to come back in their position and receive their full benefits. So we're, we've actually advocated for that on a number of different levels. You've seen this chart a few times. This is from educational researcher Linda Darling-Hammond's work in 2016 that shows the teacher's supply and demand and the shortage in the United States. There's an estimated gap of 100,000 teachers per year stretching out at least until 2021. We know this is a challenge across the country as well as we do here in YCSD. Again, it's not only teachers. We have continued vacancies for paraeducators, custodians, and as I said, bus drivers. You'll hear me say that walking a bit through the presentation. Looking at our student enrollment, when Mr. Bowen presented this information in the budget outlook presentation, he reported that the county was recommending the division plan for 203 students, a 203-student increase in our ADM. So that'll bring us to 13,188. When you think about our changing demographics, the impact of the special education teacher shortage is compounded by the student growth in this area. We just had a presentation on our, on our special education programs. You heard a little bit of this information earlier. We're up to more than a 32.7% increase since FY '10, majority of that, 237 students, additional students with disabilities in the last five years. This continues to be a challenge for us fiscally and in recruiting special education teachers and paraeducators. Taking a look at our economically disadvantaged population, this is the students who received free reduced lunch. There's almost a 20% increase in the last 11 years. Finally, looking at our English-language learners, this has almost doubled in the last 10 years, and you can see the percentage increase from FY '10 to FY '20. The state revenue is based on the governor's proposed budget, an increase of 6.3% that is based on the projected enrollment and rebenchmarking in the local composite index. There are a few changes in the federal budget, as you can see on the screen. We have adjusted the Impact Eight baseline from 8.5 to 8.7 million. There are also adjustments where we see a decline due to the expiration of the DODI grant. As far as the county goes, the county administrator has indicated that a $1.1 million is a working number for us to build this budget. We also no longer rely on any support from the revenue stabilization fund. And board members, you'll remember, this was a phase down from several years ago. We were at 900,000, 600,000, 300,000. Last year it was 200,000, so we will not rely on that further anymore. So our total revenue increase is $5.76 million. We always look to identify areas of savings as well. This year, our staff attrition projection is $900,000. So the net additional resources available is $6.6 million. We utilized the same budget process this year. We held community budget sessions. Mr. Bowen and I went out to several middle schools to gain input from the community. Staff and community members had an online opportunity to submit suggestions. All 19 principals were asked to work with their staff and the leadership team to provide input, and each department leader submitted budget needs. As you can see up there, we had 192 suggestions to the tune of $9.1 million. So after collecting this information and input and feedback, we've conducted a comprehensive review of the submissions. We continue to bucket these items in three priority areas as we have in the last few years: instruction and learning, retention and recruitment, and compliance and safety. So we'll take a deeper look at these priority areas, and I'll share my recommendations. The items in this area align with Goals One and Two of our strategic plan and allow us to expand our efforts K through 12 in preparing students for career and college success in alignment with the profile of a Virginia graduate. So you can see there, those positions are aligned with instruction and learning. The one associate director for student services, that position is really based off of what you just heard from the Gibson Group, our consultants that came in. The eight teachers, one lead counselor, counselor, and four office clerks are really based off of student growth. The four office clerks, we did add end-of-year positions this year to our largest elementary schools. We're going to build them in the budget for next year. New horizons, so there's an increase, that figure, that $250,000 is based on an increase in participation in gov school, special ed, and CTE programs. This also includes their proposed raise for compensation. We did add $75,000 to the textbook replacement fund as well as add this item this year, $30,000 for high school, a high school esports program. And TAB High School this spring is piloting esports for us, and Mr. Rice is extremely excited with that program. The stipends for instructional trainers, we simply moved these dollars from the expired DODI grant. We have a lot of value in those stipends for those instructional trainers. It will now be integrated in the operating budget. Stipends for STEM and robotics competition team sponsors, again, this is, continue to increase our support for STEM clubs, and this aligns with our strategic plan. Retention and recruitment. Our success and our students' success begins and ends with the dedicated, passionate, and committed employees of YCSD. It's critical that we continue to provide competitive compensation to keep and attract the very best. We are disappointed that the governor's budget did not include a raise for staff for FY '21, only FY '22, which is the second year of the biennial budget. Goal three of the division's strategic plan includes two objectives: supporting competitive compensation for both licensed and non-licensed staff. As Mr. Bowen presented in January, we have lost a little ground with our licensed pay scale. This strategy of including both a step and a market adjustment will help us address that. So as you can see, those first items up on the screen for employee compensation, we're looking at 2% average increase. You can see the breakdown of licensed staff, non-licensed staff, bus drivers, and assistants. Next, the quadrilateral review process is $114,000 dedicated for that area. And this, in group one, we have office clerks, secretary ones, and head custodians. Transportation area services, I'm sorry, transportation area supervisors, we're moving them from 11-month to 12-month so that they can be there during the summer for planning purposes to improve our efficiencies in transportation. We're also going to add a transportation scheduler to support the demands of special education transportation as well as McKinney-Vento students in the division. And then finally, regrading the speech language pathologist, $26,000. This is due to a critical shortage of SLPs and the high price of contractual services. We're certainly having a, us and other divisions are having a hard time getting speech-language pathologists. I know Dr. Vlad Duz shared that we had someone who we were really interested in hiring, I guess, a few weeks ago, and that person turned the job down due to the salary. So we're making that adjustment. Under compliance and safety, so the positions identified here on the first line support instruction and learning, but there are state and federal mandates that require these additions for next year. So you can see the counselors, the EL teacher, special ed teachers, and the paraeducators, those are all due to mandates and additional programs that we're going to add for special education next year. You can see that we're adding two school resource officers at the middle school level. If you recall, I guess it was last year, the year before, we added two resource officers to split the two middle schools that we have. This will put us at a resource officer in every secondary school, so we'll have eight of them. The opportunity here is, middle school-level resource officers could also begin to serve some of our elementary schools as well, so we're looking forward to that. There are also mandatory increases to VRS-related benefits totaling over $835,000, and increases to the Children's Services Act program for the private placement of special education students. We're adding $38,000 to cover the increased cost for our athletic trainers, and our athletic trainers are CHKD, and taking the responsibilities for football helmet reconditioning off of the schools. So we'll free up some funds for our schools, so the division will take care of that. And finally, we're proposing a 10% increase to our health insurance plan. I'm going to ask Mr. Bowen to share some important information related to this decision.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. That figure we saw on the previous slide, that was $1 million. That is the school division's cost for that 10% increase. What I wanted to do is walk the board through a little bit of background and history of what led us to this difficult decision. And when we talk about employee compensation, it's always a great thing, but when it's offset sometimes by an increase in the benefits, that's always a difficult and sensitive topic. But I think we need to have some perspective of the history of our health insurance. So if we look at this slide, if we look at the yellow, it's comparing rates in fiscal year 2011 to our current rates in FY '20. And in FY '11, we had three plans. They were with, and we were contracted with Anthem at the time. We had an HMO, we had a key care point of service, and we also had a health savings account. If you recall, in 2019, county and school division migrated from separate Anthem plans into a joint Cigna plan. And at the time of that migration, we had three plans that were similar to the Anthem plans. In FY '20, we have since dropped one of our plans, so now we just have two. But I'm only showing the comparison of one plan. The plan that we show here, the Cigna OAP1, that open access, that represents 96% to 97% of our employees are in that plan. So if you look at the first row there for employee only and starting in FY '11, the total cost of that plan was $405. And York County School Division paid $367 of that premium, and the employee paid $38. And if we fast-forward 11 years later, the cost of that plan increased to $568. YCSD's paying $528, and the employee's paying $40. So over that period of time, the school division has picked up $161 of that cost, and the employee's picked up $2. And it's very similar across the other options that we have. And you look at that and you say, wow, that's great. It's been fantastic for the employee, and it has been. And there's a number of reasons why we were able to do that and the strategies that were employed by the previous administration. In 2011, school division was in the midst of the recession, and during that time, for over a period of five years, employees were not provided raises. So the strategy at that time was to try and minimize the impact of any health insurance costs. So during those years, when there was an increase, the school division assumed that increase. Now, that wasn't a strategy just employed by York County. There were other school divisions that were doing the same thing, so this was very common. However, what we've learned here in this past year is that our health insurance consultant has recommended a 24% increase. And so that's something that we have, that's something that we have to address. So I want to take you to the next slide, and this next slide is the cost of the increase. So if we look at what the recommended rates are from the health insurance consultant, our cost would go up under that employee-only OAP1 from $568, it would go up to $136. And then the cost to YCSD would be $600,000. And then the cost to Y CSD would be $655, and the employee would pay $49. So the impact to the employee would be $9, to Y CSD would be $127. Still, when you look at that, it looks good for the employee. However, this really doesn't solve our, our problem. One of the problems that we have with, with our plan design is the percentage contribution which we see all the way to the right. So for that employee only, we're, the school division is paying 93 percent of that premium, and the employee is paying 7 percent. That hasn't changed since prior to 2011. And, and, and all the other rates that we're seeing there haven't changed either. So while this is, while increasing the plan 24 percent looks good for the employee, this is, this looks really bad for the school division. Because if we were to take this recommendation, we would not be able to provide the 2 percent compensation to the employees. Now, one thing about our plan that's, that's great is we are self-funded. And being self-funded is we have a health insurance reserve fund. And we've been able to mitigate the cost increases to our employees because we have this insurance reserve fund. So when the actuaries look at our plan and they look at what's happening in the insurance market, they, they come to us and make a recommendation that you should increase your, your plan by maybe 10 percent. Well, because we're self-funded and we have this insurance reserve fund, we can always tap into that and say, well, you know what, we're only going to increase it maybe 5 percent, and we're going to tap into our insurance reserve fund to cover the costs. The other good thing about our plan is, about our, our employees, is that we've had steady experience since 2011. So we haven't seen spikes and increases in cost as a result. But what we need to do is we need to start looking at shifting some of the cost to the employee, not just for the school division to assume the, the largest increase. So let me take you to the, the next slide. And this is what we're proposing. So as I mentioned, the consultant recommended 24 percent. We do have flexibility to, to adopt something less, and that's what we're proposing here. So we're proposing a 10 percent increase. And if you look at the, at the green there, those are our proposed rates. That employee only would only go up $57, and we would see what the employee would pay $56, $56 instead of the 40. So the net impact on the employee is $16 a month. And we got there by changing that percentage contribution. So instead of having a 93.7, we've gone to 91.9. And we've adjusted each one of those percentage contribution rates by 2 percent, shifting 2 percent over to the employee. This looks a little worse for the employee, but I will tell you, when you compare the previous slide to this slide, the only difference that we're looking at is it's $7 more to the employee on the employee only per month. It's $5 more on the employee plus one. It's $1 more on the employee plus spouse, and it's $3 more per month on the employee plus family. So while we're seeing a little shift, it's not significant enough that I believe it was going to have the negative impact that otherwise it would have on the overall plan and the negative impact it would have on the school division. Because again, if we shift more of that expense to the school division, there's something that's going to have to be cut out of the budget, and that would come in the form of compensation. So in 2019, let me go back, our health insurance reserve fund, we've maintained a healthy balance in the neighborhood of $6 to $7 million. In 2019, we took a significant charge of $3 million to that fund. So that is what's driving this decision. We cannot, we cannot afford to take another $3 million hit, so we have to do something with the cost. And as, and as I pointed out in that very first slide, we've kept costs very low to the employee, but we've kept our own costs low because we've had great experience over the past 10 years. So this is something that we, we need to address. I think it's the best strategy that we could come up with. And also something to point out, since we migrated from Anthem to Cigna, we also changed our plan dates. So prior to moving to Cigna, we had a plan date start in October. So everybody's rates changed at that time, if there was, if there was a premium increase. Now we're on a January 1 plan date. So employees won't see, won't feel this increase for the entire year. We do take the premiums out in the previous month, so they would feel this in the month of December. However, if we, if we approve the budget in its current form with a 2 percent raise, the employees will, the 12-month employees will recognize that raise July 1, in July. The teachers will recognize that in September. And then they wouldn't see that increase until December. And I'll take any questions if you have about the insurance.
It's, it's an excellent update. Appreciate the history too, so, you know, folks, citizens at home can correlate, you know, over the years. Thank you very much.
So moving forward, what we'll do is, Dr. Vlad Duh and his staff and I, we will meet with the benefits committee. We will present this data and information to them in detail, and we'll, we'll get their recommendations and suggestions, suggestions moving forward.
All right, so I have, I believe, two more slides, or, yes, two more slides. So as you can see, the total funds available up on the screen are under each of the three priorities. You can see those amounts. The total expenditures is over $6.6 million with a total budget gap of zero. And then our total FY '21 superintendent proposed budget is a little over $151 million. That increases 3.82 percent. So when you look at the next steps, school board public hearing on February 24th, we will bring, if there's an adjustment through crossover, we will bring you an adjusted budget March night for the school board work session. The school board will adopt the budget, hopefully, the proposed budget on March 23rd, and then the school board will adopt the operating budget on May 18th. So if there's any questions, we'll take them at this time.
Any questions?
Just real quick, back to the benefits. Even with the proposed 10 percent, you know, increase, is that in line comparatively to neighboring divisions? Is the plan that we have similar, still better, worse, or whatever? If I could address that.
Sure.
We were provided with a comparison of neighboring school divisions. Even with the proposed increases, we would be lower than current, much lower than current rates, provided nobody else, you know, does increases. But on average, you know, across the United States, it's about 6 to 7 percent increase. So we anticipate the other school divisions would also increase their healthcare raise. So this still makes us very competitive. I know when we go out there and we offer that job, and this is an outstanding benefit, we're still there, very competitive for our prospective employees and current employees as well.
And will we have a solid state number?
Valentine's Day, right?
A solid state number? That will be at the conclusion of the General Assembly in early March. So crossover occurs this week, so we'll have another snap, we'll see another snapshot of what, what might be coming our way.
Any ideas? Looking to your crystal ball.
What I'm willing to hear, which is there's compensation coming, additional compensation.
Because I know there was, they were working through the weekend in anticipation of crossover, so, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shandor and Mr. Bowen, for that presentation. So that was our last presentation for the evening, and I appreciate all the information presented. It was a lot that we had to go through, especially under the circumstances with what you've had to deal with. It's almost like you had probably two different bodies working at the same time on a lot of stuff, and we certainly understand that. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, February 24th at 7:00 PM upstairs in the boardroom. And if one of the new board members would take us into closed session.
I move that the York County School Board convene in closed session, discuss discipline regarding a specific employee pursuant to the personnel exception at section 2.2-3711 A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Second. Okay. Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mrs. Groll and seconded by Mr. Hickelbaum for the school board to go into closed session. Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Hickelbaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Groll?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes. All right, we're in closed session. Thank you.